City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for July 15, 2019. We will open our meeting with the citizens' comment on any agenda item. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who has not signed up who would like to speak on any agenda item from the public? And I don't see anyone, so we will go to item number one, intergovernmental agreement with Urban Renewal Authority. And I see Mr. Art at the table. Are you going to introduce this? Mr. Art, we'll break it to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're coming before you to get a consensus for you to move forward with the renewal of an intergovernmental agreement that we have with the city. This is Renewal Wheat Ridge and an agreement with the city to provide funding on an annual basis to help complete our undertakings and activities. This IGA was first started in 2006 and has been modified a few times since then to provide an annual contribution of $300,000. That started in 2014, has ran through 2019. As a request to city council a few months ago to kind of get an update of what we're doing with Renewal Wheat Ridge, part of this packet provides all the undertakings and activities that we have accomplished since the formation of the Urban Renewal Authority in 1981, started with the Town Center Park and is moving through all the projects there. I'd be happy to talk to any specific questions you have about any of our activities, undertakings that we have done since the formation of the, or the funding for the Renewal Wheat Ridge. The funds that we receive on an annual basis are used to help remediate blight throughout the area, so the largest portion of it has been used to do the subdivision for the Town Center North, which contains Town Center Apartments and Town Center North and will shortly begin construction of the Ridge House Apartments. And the other portion has been mainly used for the remediation of the blight at 38th and Yukon Court, the old car dealership. We Renewal Wheat Ridge purchased the parcel at the corner of 38th and Yukon Court, and we have been remediating that site. The problem with brownfield sites like that is you never quite know how much remediation's going to take. We have invested close to a million dollars into the site right now, and we're still hoping to get a no action determination letter from CDPHE at some point very shortly. But again, you never know with that contamination. So with that, tonight, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the use of the funds and all of our funds, if you have any questions, and about the activities and undertakings of Renewal Wheat Ridge and this IGA with the city.
Thank you. Questions from council? Mr. Art. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the allocation of 300,000, does that encompass the, is that encompass the city's total expenditure relating to the Urban Renewal Authority? Or are there other expenses relating to shared staff and resources? Or is that the sum total of that?
The $300,000 that is from the general fund of the city goes into what we call the general fund for Renewal Wheat Ridge, so it can be used in any of our project areas. We do have other expenses from obligations we've made for the corners of Wheat Ridge, Hacienda, Colorado, Clear Creek Crossing. Those all have their own separate funding sources.
But correct, yeah, from the general fund, the 300,000. Steve's salary is 100% funded out of the general fund. We don't charge the Urban Renewal Authority back for any of those expenses.
But in relationship to the other roles that are served by city staff with respect to the Urban Renewal Authority, are those costs included in that 300,000?
They're not.
Okay.
Additional questions? Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, explain, I think so everyone at homes know, if we go through and have a consensus on this and then end up voting on it, how is that $300,000 handled every year? And five years from now, what's going to happen to it?
Well, what happened to the 300,000? So we have been spending down most of that money on an annual basis, doing different undertakings, activities, putting stoplights in, remediating contaminated sites. So we will continue to bill on an annual basis on January 1st. If Renewal Wheat Ridge found that they did not need those revenues for anything else, we could always choose to terminate that contract on a 60-day notice.
So you have, like for 2019, where would the $300,000 potentially go? Do you have a use for it, or is it just there?
If 2019, we're using it for the remediation of the Yukon Court site.
Well, that was, that's money you already have in the budget though, isn't it?
It's money that we received in January 1st of 2019.
Okay, but this would go forward starting then in 2020?
Correct. This contract ends at the end of this year.
And do you need it for 2020, or do you just, if you, you know, I mean, guess what I'm saying is what happens if we say, yeah, you can have 300 grand out of the general fund in 2020, and for some reason you don't use it? Does it stay with us, or does it go into your coffers and then once it's gone, it's gone?
Currently, yes. We transfer 300 at the beginning of the year to their budget, and it rolls over if they don't spend it. So it goes for more than just the remediation right now of the property at 38th and Yukon. It also pays for the Urban Renewal Authority attorney fees. They have their own attorney, Corey Hoffman. It pays for, I think they paid for the trap, the pedestrian lights on 38th Avenue out of the general fund. There's other expenses that they spend it on. So, yeah, it's, I think it's been used pretty much every year, the full 300,000.
Very close to, we have very little carryover each year. And our chairperson, Kristi Davis.
And I just want to add, there was some other, you know, for instance, one of the things that council's requested is that the urban renewal, once something is paid off, like Wheat Ridge Cycloidy, that they don't continue to get that funding, although, you know, they would have been allowed to contractually, but that was something agreed upon that we would give that back to the city. So whereas a lot of urban renewal company or committees in other cities usually have those kinds of revenues that they continue to pick up along the way, we've tended to sign it off back to the city. So I think that this allows a small allocation. Another expense, again, if you recall, I don't know if that was, it was 2018 or 2019, I think it was 2018, but then again, you know, we did pay for the damaged lights, all down 38th, that was with the hailstorm. So we're always very transparent with how the money's spent, and as a committee member of Urban Renewal and here on city council, I always try to direct possibilities back to Renewal Wheat Ridge if there's a way that we can help out with some of the expenses.
My concern is making a five-year obligation when we don't know what the requirement might be five years from now. I would much rather see this stay on an annual basis so that in November, when they come to us and we're doing our 2020 budgets, then we have a one-year look ahead, and well, okay, here's $300,000 this year, but in 2020 in November, they have to come to us again and say, well, here's what we're looking at possibly for 2021. But I hate to write blank checks five years out in advance.
That's a good point. The monies have decreased. The amount used to be, not to get into the weeds too much, but the amount of money that went to Urban Renewal Authority in the past was tied to how much sales stacked increment came off the Safeway Shopping Center development. And it used to be, they were getting up to 450,000 a year at one point. Several years ago, we came to council and said, we don't need that much, and lowered it to 300,000. Right now, it's not associated with the Safeway Shopping Center anymore, it's just a $300,000 lump sum. But you're right, there might be a point in time where they don't need as much money because, if you remember, the TIF clock has started on all the urban renewal areas, so they will start to cease additional revenues and property tax increment. I don't know if there's tons coming in right now, but at some point, they may have more revenue than they, not necessarily than they need, I'd hate to say that, but.
But we have shown our willingness to participate with the city. You know, we paid for the stoplight at Vance and 44th. We paid for half of the stoplight at Xenon Court and 32nd Avenue. We just approved to put another RRFB, the flashing pedestrian, down by Colorado Plus and Clancy's to help people at night cross there. So.
Understood, but that could be handled if the money stayed within the city to start with. I mean, if we understand what I'm saying, I just, I understand you've done some things like that and come forward, and I genuinely appreciate it, but I'm just hesitant to write a five-year blank check when we don't have any clear idea of the need five years from now.
Ms. Davis?
I appreciate that, but I think that when you look around the city, there are definitely areas that are in this, in the renewal plans that are going to have a lot of tension in the next few years. It'd be, I would say, I would agree if there were, if we didn't have a lot of renewal areas that needed to be worked on, but I think that being that we do have Clear Creek Crossing and the Kipling areas and that, I think there's a lot of potential still out there that that money would be spent.
Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the areas that is very highlighted on this map as far as urban renewal blighted areas is the I-70 and Kipling Corridor. Do you plan to address any of those areas in the next couple of years, or can you talk about projects that you guys have maybe discussed, or, I mean, is that kind of in line with the Kipling interchange?
It certainly could be if that was. I would imagine the Kipling interchange is going to be very expensive. I can't imagine we could make a much of a dent in that corridor.
Yeah, I think that project, we have been discussing that with the property owner of the property at the, I guess, the southeast corner of I-70 and Kipling, that this is an urban renewal area, and the urban renewal could, if they chose, provide additional tax incentives for that project. Nothing has come through yet with that project. If you look at your attachment on URA activities, the I-70 Kipling Corridor is huge, it's a big area, urban renewal area, but there are one, two, three, four, five, six activities that have happened in that area. Not all of them are around Kipling and I-70, but I think Kipling and I-70 is an area that is ripe for the use of TIF. Just, there's no project right now that has come forward. But we are discussing this evening a couple items that have to do with I-70 Kipling that pertain to the hotel motel district up there that TIF could be, come into use for.
Ms. Dozeman?
Sorry, just a follow-up question because I know some of those businesses are going to be completely affected by that interchange. And, you know, if we're, if we're going to talk about refinancing into our business community, I'd really like to see some of those incentives go towards allowing those businesses to stay in our community, especially if they've been longstanding businesses. And so I know that there have been a lot of talks, and I'm sure that that corridor has kind of been on hold because we have so many, you know, agreements coming down with the state of Colorado and the federal government, but, you know, I think that, that on the map, there's a whole yellow area of the I-70 and Kipling Corridor that we, I mean, I see that the projects are kind of within that area, but none of them are actually on that corridor.
Mr. Pine?
Well, thank you for the work and pulling it together. I guess as related to the multiple years and the 300,000, I feel like what's been presented to us and having gone through this for several years now, I think it's pretty clear that, you know, we're not too far off in the valuation of what we need to do this, and I think moving forward, I'm not concerned too much moving forward in a five-year time period because I agree with a couple of the comments that have already been made, that there's a tremendous amount of opportunity to continue to, to look at with the URA in this space. So I think I'm okay with that. Certainly, as you, you know, go through that and we're coming up towards the expiration of that, I think maybe, maybe it'll be different, maybe many of these other projects will be in line and producing, and maybe that'll change our minds, but I don't think on the balance, it's actually, especially, I don't think it's re-diverting, it's not diverting funds to something that isn't our priority, and I think I-70 Corridor is a great example of that.
Additional questions or comments? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the operations integration section of the agreement, when it talks about reports to council, and it says that reports will be provided on a periodic basis, and so is that an annual basis or twice a year, or what's the schedule for that?
At council's wishes, we'd be happy to come back and report. I believe Ms. Davis does report at city council meetings during the comment. We'd be happy to come back to you as often as possible that you would like to have an update of what we're doing.
Not necessarily setting a schedule here tonight, but I think as we're looking at a five-year agreement, it would be nice to have at least an annual report presented to council relative to the expenditures and the returns that may have come from the $300,000 that have been invested.
Be happy to.
Yeah, we more or less have a report like that anyway, so it'd be something I could formally share or represent.
Annual report.
Additional questions? Mr. Urban?
One other question is it relates to the city codes. It says the authorities shall comply with applicable city ordinances, codes, rules, and regulations related to the development and/or redevelopment of urban renewal areas except as provided otherwise in the urban renewal plans and the Calvaro Urban Renewal Law. So do we have conflicts within our city code and to the urban renewal law?
I have been doing this now with the city for eight years, and we have not had any conflicts. Are you aware of any? Patrick?
No, I don't know, Mr. Dahl, is that standard language? Do you know anything about that language? I think that was just some standard language that was, has been in that agreement for years. I haven't, I don't remember any issues. I don't know if there's anything specific in the state law that overrides our current city code, if that's your question.
Well, just as it reads, it says you have to comply with all of our city codes and rules and regulations except as you otherwise provided in some plan, but what is a, if I have a plan to speed, do I get away with speeding just because I had a plan?
Well, none of our plans contradict our local code, so I'm not exactly sure why that language is in there. We could, we could strike that if you'd prefer.
Or otherwise, it just appears as though they can write a plan to.
Yeah, it does.
Soverge our.
I agree.
Additional discussion?
And I could certainly email our URA attorney, ask him if he knows why that language is there.
Ms. Davis?
I just have a quick question kind of regarding Mr. Matthews' questions. I guess if there were a year, similar to kind of how we used to get more of the tax dollars and urban renewal said, hey, we don't need that amount, we're giving it to the city as long as, if the city commits to this amount. I'm guessing that there's years that we could say, hey, we're fine, we didn't spend it last year, and we don't need it this year. Is that true?
I think so.
Easy enough.
I think maybe you could put some language in there that that's maybe reviewed annually, the dollar amount, the agreements for five years, but maybe the funding is reviewed annually. Would that help?
Okay. Additional discussion? Staff is asking for, in our recommended action on page two, to approve the agreement, items one and two. Do we have consensus on council to move this forward with, I guess with the provision that we make an annual review of the funding?
And Zach's language.
And Mr. Urban's language with respect to any conflicts. We have consensus. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Art. We will move to item number two. This is extended stay lodging regulations. We have Mr. Dahl and Mr. Johnstone. Mr. Johnstone, will you provide us with an introduction on this one?
Yeah, I think, excuse me, I sounded loud. Maybe a brief introduction, and then I think we think of this as a kind of a working meeting. We've structured the council memo in such a manner that we gave you a number of different decision points, so we'd hope to kind of jump into those sooner than later. But before we do that, maybe just a few opening thoughts. Extended stay lodging has been on council's radar as a potential, I guess, enforcement tool or regulatory change that might give us more ability to effectively manage our hotel motel districts. So that's really what we're here to talk about. We're excited to put a little more flesh on the bone in terms of our staff memo and some of the things that you can evaluate thinking about as tools. As is noted in the council memo, and as I think you're all aware, we do experience higher police calls for service in these areas, which is really the reason to think about different regulatory changes such as the extended stay lodging and such as the licensing regulations that'll come after this discussion. We also have observed during our annual motel inspection process that there are, you know, other activities that are potentially of concern in the units regarding, some of the units being used as longer-term housing options, which comes with its own set of challenges on both the personal level and a kind of a code level in terms of public safety issues. So those are really some of the reasons that we're here. From a regulatory standpoint, certainly is possible to regulate, define and regulate. We don't currently define extended stay lodging, so that would be the starting point, and that's actually your first question. Do you want to define and then consider regulations for extended stay lodging? And then we've really attempted to structure tonight's discussion, as I mentioned, with a series of really concrete questions that would get us started on drafting a potential ordinance if that's council's direction. That said, we want to keep it very clear that I think we view this as kind of a high level and preliminary discussion tonight, that we're not trying to necessarily dive into the details. We certainly can, if that's your desire, but that isn't the approach that we've taken. We believe a measured approach on this topic is a reasonable way to get started. And then further, one of our closing questions for you is what do you see as next steps if you do want to delve into a possible ordinance? We've suggested a couple different outreach approaches that we could pursue with your direction to get input from the existing operators in the community as well as the industry at large. We don't have any true extended stay lodging facilities as the industry would define it in the city right now. We've proposed some regulations as to how we think we might regulate those moving forward, but I for one would certainly want to get some input from the hotel industry at large. There's several big hotel operators in the Denver metro area that I think could be great resources to say, you know, maybe we have some local goals, but we also want to be respectful of what their business models look like and align those to the best extent possible. So unless there are really any initial questions for me, we do, again, have this structure whereby we can go through a series of questions that kind of incrementally get us to some decision points.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. In the opening remarks was established that we have some places that are acting like extended stay residences, and we've pointed out that we have an abnormally high amount of service calls at those locations. So do we want to make, to legalize the extended stay situation and keep having a lot of abnormally high service calls to those locations? You know, that's the first question I see that we have to answer, is one of the things we want to do is cut down on crime in the city and service calls for the department. Are we enabling more service calls, or should we looking at how do we reduce the number of service calls, and does that have to be a part of this equation?
And I think that's actually one of our questions towards the end of our memo, is that we, I think we're potentially writing this memo specifically looking forward, but also looking at existing conditions. So moving forward, in my mind, it's a policy question for council, but there's nothing wrong with kind of an extended stay lodging facility. They can be a great asset. They're often used by corporate clients, they, you know, have good room rates, would generate good revenue, and I think good clientele for the city. So moving forward, we could see one at Clear Creek Crossing, we could see one along the Kipling Corridor, and that could be a really good thing. I think looking at the existing stock, it has some challenges, and we're sensitive to the fact that, you know, it's a housing option, unfortunately for some people, that might be their only choice. But we're also sensitive to the fact that it creates some unsafe conditions that we think are worthy of addressing and potentially is correlated with higher crime rates, which we want to get better under control. So it's a question, I think, for council, a couple of questions that we have in there. One being, do you want to give, if we go to an extended stay ordinance and say it has to have certain operational characteristics that some of the existing hotels don't have, then you have, I think, two questions. You have one question of do you want to give them some sort of a time reprieve where they, they can continue to kind of continue their business model because it's real, we've been out there, we know it exists. And then two, moving forward, would you want to give those hotels an opportunity to have some longer stay lodging options if they did certain things operationally or physically to the building? And would they be fully required to comply with the future ordinance? In other words, what the standard's going to be for a new extended stay has to meet X, Y, and Z. Does an existing hotel that wants to keep some hotel, some extended stay rooms, given an exemption from some of those rules? Not all of them, but maybe they don't have to meet the full bevy of what we're asking moving forward for future extended stays.
Mr. Pine?
Well, I'm going to just, I'm going to jump in on the first question here, and I think, which is, does council want to define and allow extended stay lodging in some capacity? I am interested in this discussion and defining it first and then determining it. And just to jump off on this definition, I mean, I think this points out some of the difficulty, which this one is much more kind of defining a physical characteristic versus an operational characteristic, and I think what we're talking about is the fact that we've got, you know, places that have a business model operationally. I believe that, you know, we're, we're either by, you know, what they're offering, people can stay for long, extended periods of time, however, the physical facility isn't, doesn't, doesn't have the characteristics that we're talking about that meet those needs. And so I think what you just defined is really, in fact, the real trick. Certainly, if we want to have extended stay facilities that are being built up, especially new ones, we want them to meet a certain standard, and I think the definition and defining these is something that we should think about. How to manage the, essentially, the non-compliance that could be created by that would be the, you know, would be the thing to deal with. And it's a really touchy subject, and I know we've talked a lot about it in the community. I mean, we're dealing with people and many times people who, you know, don't have, you know, this isn't an important option, and so I think we need to acknowledge that. But then again, if, in fact, we're, these places aren't necessarily safe or well-suited for extended stay, then we have an obligation there as well. So it's trying to find that balance, so I guess I like the beginning of this. I don't like this definition because I don't think it includes some of the operational business model pieces of it.
Mr. Dozeman?
So I guess I have kind of a question to piggyback on that as far as the proposed 30 consecutive days and then 120-day duration. 30 consecutive days and then 120-day duration total of the state recommendations. Is that pretty standard as far as this industry goes?
It's a good question. I can't say that with certainty. I did explain, I think, our rationale for it, which is in part based on building code requirements. So if a unit is being occupied for longer than 30 days, it should be meeting the International Residential Code, which has a whole nother list of requirements than would be required for extended stay lodging hotel in terms of different egress requirements, different minimum room sizes, and just different construction requirements. So that was the basis for the 30 days. The other, the basis for the 120 days in a calendar year was just anticipating, and I haven't thought too hard about this, but that, you know, there may be some individuals or groups that may want to kind of work around that 30-day requirement and, you know, officially move out for a day, but then come back and, you know, be there for another 30 days. So it seems like, in parallel with the licensing requirement, which we would suggest that we'll have active ledgers of who's staying there, under what names and for what duration, that would be a way to monitor if someone is kind of trying to work around that rule by having that cap at 120 days as well. Another reason for the 120-day cap is, I do have some experience with extended stay lodging in a previous municipality in drafting regulations. And I think one of the things that we heard was that, you know, amongst corporate clients, I mean, there could be opportunities where, you know, I'm here for 30 days in January every year for, eh, and I'm out at Enreal doing something, and then I'm here 30 days in June as well. So I think there could be occasions where you've got people that want to be here, you know, not more than 30 consecutive days, but more than just 30 days in a calendar.
Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, and I appreciate you guys kind of reworking this memo into something more as a working product. And so kind of keeping along with that, my comments are to question number one, which is where I think we're starting. And one of the questions was, first off, I do think that we should define extended stay lodging. And I think that my concern is that we are making sure that the people who are utilizing this as temporary housing have an opportunity for transition time, but I believe we addressed that in question number five. So, but for question one, the question, which zoning districts to allow them in? And I guess my question is, why would we, would there be a reason why we would not allow extended stay in the zoning that we already allow short-term hotel stays?
Essentially, we are with one exception, which is in mixed-use districts, we allow them. Now, we're proposing that they be conditional uses and maybe we don't need to do that. The thinking was that they just could have some additional nuances and a desire to use that conditional use process as a way to kind of work through some of these operational characteristics that we're suggesting that they have, particularly if we incorporate flexibility. So the conditional use permit in the mixed-use districts could give you that kind of ability to negotiate out just those fine points. In terms of, currently we allow it as a regular hotel motels as a special use in C1, C2, and IE. In my memo, I've suggested that we take out IE. There's no great reasoning behind that other than it seems like the extended stay lodging wants to be in somewhat of a, may not want to be in an IE-zoned area where there's, you know, heavier industry if you're staying someplace for, you know, a week, two weeks, a month, that you might want it to be in either a commercial area where you have the amenities or just not as intense an environment. So I was just thinking that they might not be as successful when located in industrial employment districts.
Continue, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you. And then, so suggestion is C1, C2 as special use and conditional use and mixed-use zoning is the response to which zoning district should we allow them in?
That's my recommendation.
Recommendation, okay.
In the spirit of, feel free to, you know, make consensus discussions along the way if you want to capture that. It sounds like, in terms of the very first question, do we want to allow, define and allow in some capacity and to your question or comment, Mr. Pond, very preliminary definition. So, but if there's consensus that we want to delve into this territory, that'd be a helpful starting point.
One issue that I had with that might be, you're using lodging establishment designed to provide accommodations. Does that encompass that they were constructed and they were operated? So I would add.
Yeah, constructed and operated.
Constructed and operated because you might have a great design, but...
So then I guess I'll start with the first consensus that Mr. Johnstone has asked for and is, do we want to define and allow extended stay lodging in some capacity in the city of Wheat Ridge? Do we have a consensus to move forward about?
I had a question with respect to that. Doesn't our code already speak to extended stay if something is happening for longer than 30 days, then sales tax isn't charged on that? Or don't we have some kind of language in the code already regarding extended stay?
I can't speak to the lodger's tax. I'm just not intimately familiar with that section of the code. From a zoning standpoint, for stays longer than 30 days, it would be considered a residential occupancy. So that's true in both the zoning code and the building code. But less than 30 days, we just say the use is designed for transient occupancy and we don't define what transient occupancy is.
Okay.
So would we like to define and allow extended stay lodging in some capacity in the city of Wheat Ridge is what the consensus I'm asking for?
Do we have a consensus on that? That was yes to have a definition. Now we're, I guess, moving to a definition? Ms. Hop, or Mr. Pond?
Yeah, I'm not sure if we're moving, I think it means that we're gonna kind of bring it back and not necessarily wordsmith the definition right now, right?
That's my intent.
That's fine, because I think Ms. Hoppy was gonna go with number two already.
Well, the next thing I was gonna ask is, the question is, which zoning districts to allow them in? And staff's suggestion is special use in C1 and C2 and conditional use in all mixed-use zonings. And so I'm gonna ask for consensus if we can move forward with that zoning or if somebody would like to add to that. Can we have consensus to have a special use in C1 and C2, conditional use in all mixed-use zoning?
We have consensus on that one?
Great. Well, Ms. Dozeman's already started the conversation on the next topic, but getting into kind of generally physical and operational characteristics of the, and the duration of stay. So the, we've kind of, I've given you my explanation of why we're proposing what we're proposing in terms of duration of stay. Be glad to answer other questions or if there aren't, there's that recommendation or question as well. Does council support the proposed 30 and 120-day duration of stay recommendations? And then also, we need to think about in some way defining transient because it needs to be by definition different than extended stay.
We'll go to Mr. Urban, Ms. Dozeman, and then Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess one of my concerns about this is, do we have any sort of numbers relative to the current rooms that are being used for extended stay? So we have 972 rooms within the city of Wheat Ridge. That's like 354,000 room nights within a year. So what's the percentage of room nights that are being used by tenants in a current extended stay situation? Do we have any ability to know what that looks like?
I don't think we have any reasonably good data on that.
And so I guess that's one of my concerns is trying to figure out what segment of the market is this relative to the total available rooms within the city as well as trying to figure out if we do regulate this, does it become another situation where we regulate something and the industry moves or shuffles a little bit to avoid this regulation, defining themselves in a different way or otherwise sort of skirting what we're trying to do here? So that would be one of my first questions is just, how do we know what's currently going on and how is this gonna fix that?
So it's a great question and one I'd love to have the answer for. I think the challenge is, I'm not sure we have any of the tools in place to find that out until we create a regulatory environment that lets us, both through the licensing ordinance and then through making this distinction of what is transient and what it isn't. So we just, you know, we, I don't think we have any data points that would give us other information other than the fact that our inspectors are in there, you know, into every room every year, once a year, but they don't, that's not something they specifically lodge to my knowledge, Dan.
I think more anecdotal from the PD might have.
What we have is anecdotal. We don't have any survey data. Had the opportunity to sit down with one of our hotel motel managers today and they do have extended stay. In fact, they have people that live there year-round. And it varies by season. So if you think about the hailstorms, different weather events we have, they will get people that, you know, stay there, you know, a week, two weeks, maybe a month, maybe, maybe longer. I think it's a great question. It's one that we kind of struggle with in terms of getting, you know, the actual numbers. But I think in our budgeted motels, I think we asked all the property managers to find out that there's some form of extended stay occurring there.
Ms. Dozeman.
Yes, thank you. So I guess I'm just a little confused. So it sounds like we're defining the extended stay of 30 consecutive days or longer, but then it also asks if we would support limiting the duration of occupancy for traditional hotel motel rooms to 10 days. So I don't know if we're gonna be defining anywhere from 10 to 30 days differently or if that's not allowed, so it's only 10 days for a regular hotel room and then 30 days for extended stay? Like, I don't know what the interim between that is.
Yeah, so the recommendation is that it be a maximum of 30 consecutive days in extended stay. So if they have whatever we define to be the right mix of amenities in-room and in-complex to be an extended stay, it's a maximum of 30 days and 120 days we're proposing. And then it just then begs the question, okay, if that's extended stay, what is what we currently define as transient? And so I don't know what that number is. I think that might be part of the research, right? Is it, is it okay to be someplace two weeks without access to cooking facilities and kitchen facilities and other amenities? Maybe that's okay. So 10 days was really just something to start the conversation.
Ms. Davis.
So I have just a couple of questions and I think I answered one of them on my own. Down below in the memo, it says if council desires to allow them, the next three overall questions need to be answered. The one was the zoning. And then I'm guessing, again, we're gonna go over the physical characteristics and how to handle existing hotels in the next few questions. I will say, it's interesting because we were, I was just in Cheyenne and there was two Marriott properties right next to each other and both new. One being kind of a hotel-like and the other one being Marriott's version of the extended stay. I forget the name of it. They both have two different names, but they're both by Marriott, you know? And it's not Courtyard, it's something else. But anyways, having been there with someone who is a consultant type of person for Oracle, they spend months in towns. So I know part of the focus tends to be on our current situation, but I think that being said, if the Marriott rolled in with an extended stay and Oracle came in, like one of her comments said, she said was, it was cheaper for them to rent week by week and even if they went home for the weekend, they'd still keep it for the week because it was cheaper than renting it for five days and then renting it again for five days. So they would just keep it week for week for week. And then the Oracle folks would spend six months out there with their clients developing software and that type of thing. So I think something to consider because I think we think of our current state and how do we handle that, which is something we need to handle too. But I think that there are a lot of people, like the 120, again, I would just be curious with industry standard. And then my next question would be, again, like how would you even police something like that? I mean, would you expect these hotel motels to police themselves and be like, sorry, Oracle, that person's been in here for 120 days, they're out? You know? And I'm guessing that they wouldn't do that. So I'm just thinking, some real-life experience that it's like, wow. And it was interesting because even a discussion a week ago.
Yeah, a couple of things, great questions and comments. I think you alluded to this, but, you know, those are some of the things I think we could learn by reaching out to the industry. You know, maybe it's a certain percentage, just off the top of my head, of rooms that can be rented for longer periods. You know, maybe there is a distinction between any of the existing facilities if they are allowed to continue operating in some manner, even if it's for a short period of time or for a longer period of time under certain conditions, that you could limit those to the 30 days because they're clearly, you know, not well-set up for 120-day consecutive stays. So I think, great questions and I think we can probably figure out some solutions.
Mr. Matthews.
I agree, there is a need for some extended stay and I'm not necessarily against that because when I was traveling a couple of times, I actually utilized those two many years ago. I would suggest though that that is the problem, you know? Someone checks in for 28 days, checks out and checks back into another room or just even just says, I'll pay my bill now and then stays in the same room and re-ups their deal. How do we, how do we regulate that? I would be interested, chief, if, I think the closest extended stay facility we have is down there by Sixth and Kipling, over by Hooters there, right in the intersection. I think that's, I don't know if it's called American or what, I think it's changed hands about every time I drive by. But it'd be interesting to get some input maybe from Lakewood PD on that, just on some of the issues or whatever they've run into from a PD standpoint.
Ms. Keeter and then Ms. Hoppy.
I'd also, I'd like to come with the public outreach from kind of the other end of the economic spectrum, which is, I mean, this is all my understanding, but that this is a housing option for some of the most vulnerable, economically vulnerable people. And presuming that there are people who are staying in the American motel because that's the option over homelessness. And so both in terms of the duration, but then getting into the characteristics, it's, again, finding a balance between making sure that these places have a minimum amount of livability but not requiring so much infrastructure that it's just, that the only choice for the business to comply is to completely revamp the place and then make it not economical for those people.
Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you. As I understand it, the last question is, you know, will we do public outreach? And it's not will we do, it's like, we want to do public outreach, will we do it before or after we draft the ordinance? So I think that if we could get a skeleton down tonight and then do the public outreach to the hotels, then once that information comes back and if the industry says 120 days, we really need more than that, then at that point, when it comes back to another study session, we can kind of tweak that stuff around. And then, and, you know, a lot of it is, you know, and it's how do we regulate it? Well, the next item on our agenda is the licensing and so, you know, that has kind of all of the layout of how we regulate it, you know, going forward. And it's not just extended stay, it's all of our hotels. So how do we, you know, regulate all of our hotels going forward? And the suggestions of, you know, what kind of type of reporting do we want them to do to us so that then we have the information? How do, you know, do we know if somebody's staying for 140 days versus 120 days or whatever we decide in the end? But for me, for number two, currently, until we have more information from the industry after the outreach, I'm okay with the proposed 30 and 120-day duration. My question is, but then I think maybe the 10 days should be more like 14? I know some people go on really long extended holidays, two weeks, not me, but those other lucky folks. So I just wonder if like 14 days is something that maybe we want to look at. But again, that's something where, once we do outreach, we could also, you know, tweak that going forward. So with that said, I'd like to try to find a consensus for question number two and see if council supports a proposed 30 and 120-day duration for extended stay. And... supports a proposed 30 and 120-day duration for extended stay, and support a 10-day for the traditional occupancy of the hotel motel rooms.
So there is a request for consensus on that. I have one, two, three, three, four? Four?
I would even like to consider is maybe we do a percentage. I don't know if that, because again, what I'm just thinking of, if a company, I mean, again, we're thinking present state, but we're not, because we could put in a new Marriott before we know it, is if there should be a percentage. I just hesitate on it only because of, I'm not sure what the industry does. So that's why I hesitate with it. I mean, I'm okay to start with it, but I just hesitate because, because of that.
Ms. Doosman?
So I'm, I'm also okay with that as a starting point. It just, but I would like more industry logistics as far as what does work and what they recommend. And I think a percentage would be, would be a decent place to start as well. So maybe just adding that to the consensus.
Ms. Hoppe?
Maybe I'll, I'll separate it and just start with the very last question, which would be, does city council support public outreach through staff to, before they draft the ordinance, to then come, come bring it back, the information they get after what we skinny out today, and then the stuff they get from the outreach, and then we come to another study session with that information? Do we support that?
Okay, so we have, and that was, question seven?
And so then I'll, I'll ask, then again, for this one, which is, instead of combining them, just do we support the, the proposed 30 and 120-day duration of stay for extended stay, and 10 days for traditional occupancy of hotel motel rooms?
I would support your two weeks.
Well, I don't know that they need two weeks, really. I would just go.
Consensus on that? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. So we have consensus on, and that was number two? Okay.
So the-
Excuse me, Ms. Doosman?
Sorry, since we already discussed number seven, can I just come back and ask you a question about what kind of public outreach is already happening? You guys have said that you've been down there, and you kind of recognize that some, some of these folks are, you know, in a situation where they're having to use this for extended stay because of the economics. So I mean, are there, do you reach out and offer these, these people's options, resources? Do you make contact with them in regards to that?
So similar to other ordinances that, at times, we've adopted, I think in this case, it would be a joint effort, both in the licensing piece and the extended stay piece. So, you know, we have started the process of, in the PD, of meeting with, you know, certainly the top three locations in hotels and motels in the city. They're generating calls for service. We could easily do that with nine if, if you looked at any of the material that was in the Lakewood's ordinance that just adopted on hotel licensing, that outreach to the hotels and motels in regards to what was being proposed, input from them, help them craft that. So I would envision a similar kind of process between community development, the police department, in terms of meeting with them, talking them about what's being proposed here, getting input from them, and coming back to council with, with information. And they're certainly invited throughout the process to adopt a proposed ordinance, to participate as well.
And so then what kind of resources would we be offering to the families and those that are using these facilities in, in the manner that we are going to be-
So that's sort of a, a discussion point, I think, for you as city council. I'm not sure that we have a really good handle on what that necessarily looks like, right? And, and so that's part of the question. I can, I can tell you, anecdotally, a couple of things. We, sex offenders have to register either quarterly or annually with the city. A percentage of sex offenders list hotels and motels as their place of residence. So what does that mean? Are they staying there for 30 days, 60 days, 90 days a year? What does that, that look like? We did meet with one of the property managers from one of our hotels today. She has long-term tenants that, you know, live, live there year-round. So what does that, I mean, what are the dynamics? I don't know what the dynamics of that look like. So what, what are those dynamics? Certainly, you have seasonal workers who come in after hailstorms to do, you know, roof repair or asphalt repair and stay for a long period of time. So I think we need to get sort of a handle on what that, you know, what that looks like. And then ultimately, you know, the whole issue of, of affordable housing, I think, is, is broader than either the hotel licensing or the extended stay. It's a much broader issue and, and is going to require, you know, much more thought and perspective and, you know, commitment than what the police department, community development can offer. Sort of really ongoing kinds of discussions that, you know, police chiefs, city managers, county managers, elected officials are having around the whole issue of affordable housing and, and, you know, transient, a transient population that moves around quite a bit because they can't afford, you know, high rents. Does that help?
I think maybe to add to that, too, I mean, Ms. Doosman, we don't, there, we currently don't have any resources for those folks unless council wants to direct that, that we find some. And the efforts that we are working on regionally, that we're, we're trying to collaborate with the county to provide more resources for those folks. But I don't know if that means we can relocate everybody out of these facilities, if that, if that happened, has to happen. But I think that's right. That's a probably a whole another discussion.
Ms. Hoppe?
And, and along the lines of what Leah was talking about, I, in, but it's further down under question five, but I had made note that there are ways that we can, you know, notify, like, and we can discuss this in detail when we get to question five, but things like that the residents have to be notified and, and that we have to give them, you know, 60 days, you know, of time to be able to relocate, and that it has to be through a letter, and that maybe we identify some resources in that letter that they can utilize. And I think that we have the family tree, and we have the Jack Center, and so we do have some resources in our community that maybe we can partner with, that they have suggestions, and, and they work with this population a lot. And so they probably have a lot more information than, you know, our staff or what we have currently here. But I think that that's something that needs to happen, you know, when we get to like, how, how, like, do we give them a grace period? And how do we, you know, how long for them to comply with no more long-term lodging if it's not a facility that's actually built for long-term lodging?
Chief?
And then the other thing, just to consider, and I think that that's part of the consideration for both this and the licensing piece, is, you know, there are, there are residents there that are law-abiding, that you certainly want to make accommodations for. And then there, you know, there's the criminal element, the ones that create the crime and disorder. So, you know, there's a balance there. I'm not sure exactly where the sweet spot on that is, but, but certainly, you know, I think, you know, in both this proposal and the other proposal, part of what we're trying to do is address the, you know, the element that, that creates crime and disorder, disorder and quality of life issues at these places.
Thank you. It sounds like we've completed item number two. Do you want to move on to item number three, which is in-room characteristics?
So we, you know, this is based in part on the research of the city attorney's office, Jerry and Nina. And, you know, we think this is a pretty, you know, good list of things in terms of in-room things that you'd want. I mean, minimum sizes, in some cases, minimum size for living area so that it's not just, and again, this is the moving forward model, that there's not just two bedrooms like there would be in your standard-issue hotel motel room, that they're actually designed to have a little livable space. The kitchen facilities, you know, dedicated sinks, so you're not using, you know, a bathroom sink for cooking dishes. Some sort of a fridge could be even a full-size fridge. Those are questions to kind of work through, I think, with the industry. And then cooktop requirements, right? We do encounter certainly plenty of instances where, you know, people are using hot pots or things that just aren't safe. And I'd say that probably happens every time we do a hotel motel inspection. And so the, the permanency of some cooking facilities, I think, is important. There, there are some models for, you know, kind of how many maximum occupants you can have in a room based on the size of the sleeping room. Some of those are already in the building code, and we could borrow from those. One issue that we come upon frequently, because a lot of these hotel rooms are not particularly large, and if people are using as a, as an alternative housing, that they get to store a lot of things that could impact egress just within the unit itself, let alone in the common areas. And we discussed that in the next section. So making sure that they're not storing areas in a manner that, that impacts safe egress from the unit. And then similarly, not using balconies and other areas that aren't designed for storage of personal items as storage for personal items. So that maybe is aesthetics more than anything, but that is, I think, some of the issues that we're trying to address. So that's the list that we came up with preliminarily, as what we think would be some of the things we'd want to draft regulations on for in-room characteristics.
Discussion, Ms. Hoppe?
As I read through the list of in-room characteristics, I do agree with them. I do wonder, though, if minimum size for entire unit and minimum size for living room, if those could really just be combined? Because in some of the extended stay hotels I've stayed in, it's really kind of one room. It's like a studio apartment. And so I don't know if we necessarily have to mark that off, but I, you know, just a suggestion. But then the only, another thing is the prohibition of storing personal possessions on exterior balconies. I would like to see if we could have exceptions in there for modes of transportation, so like bicycles, strollers even. They take up a lot of room, although you can sometimes fold some of them up, but, you know, strollers, but, you know, someone's personal means of, of transportation, if it's not necessarily a vehicle, then, you know, they would store their bicycle on the balcony, I think would be an exception that I'd be okay with.
Mr. Pond?
A clarifying question, I would say that I would be, I'll make a statement. I would be okay with that, with, as long as that storage wasn't, again, kind of creating the problem of egress. So I mean, in some ways, it means, it would mean, instead of creating a prohibition on those things, creating the requirement that there's storage facilities for that by the, you know, at the facility. I think that's the way to approach that, as opposed to kind of eliminating that from the prohibition. Otherwise, you're going to get people putting bikes up on there, and they're actually are going to affect the egress, and there isn't going to be any.
Ms. Keeter?
So similar to the, to the time limits, I would be okay with, with, moving forward with the idea of setting some limits, and even if that includes a placeholder for now. But this, that seems an area that's, that's really crucial for the public outreach. That if you set a number, are the places that are being used this way now, is, are those numbers that those places can even be, can even reach without tearing the place down and building it, rebuilding it? And so getting the reality check of what, what, what is actually possible at, at the places that are, that are currently being used in this fashion.
Mr. Urban, then Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to either the in-room characteristics or the common area characteristics, what resources or mechanism will be used to identify whether they've met this criteria? And how do we pay for those resources to verify someone has met this criteria or not? Is there, I know that's sort of in the licensing program discussion, but as we go through these characteristics, someone's going to have to check that box or verify that this meets that criteria. And the lodger tax is only available for rooms rented for less than their days. So these rooms won't have any lodger tax associated with it. So what revenue or fees would we use to, to apply the resources necessary to implement this program?
Mr. Urban, can you say what you said about the lodgers tax again? I wasn't sure if I followed that.
So the lodger's tax is a 10% tax applicable to days up to 30 days, and anything after 30 days, there's no lodger tax.
Right.
There would still be a sales tax in lieu of the lodger's tax, I believe. But yeah, that's, you know, it's 3%. So obviously, it's a lot lower. And Ken and I were talking about this earlier today, and yes, there's probably going to be, going to need additional resources for both this and then the next agenda item, too, the lodgers, the lodging license that we're proposing. But, you know, we do an annual, as Ken mentioned, an annual hotel motel inspection where some of these things could be checked. But I think, depending on how much enforcement you want, you know, if we want to do more of that, we might need more resources to help with that.
And I think to just piggyback on that, I mean, moving forward with a new, new extended stay, they'd be reviewed through either that conditional use or special use process, then subsequently building permits and inspections. So those are the tools we'd use in the first instance to make sure that they were being managed that way. Moving forward, whether it be new ones that crop up and need to be watched five years down the road to make sure that they are still operating in the manner that they were approved, we have this annual inspection process that we would just be looking for more things than we look for now because we'd have new regulations in place that we'd need to be enforcing. But that said, the discussions Patrick and I have had is, I mean, is it really okay if, if we're, you know, thinking we want to operate or have a pretty tight regulatory environment around extended stay in terms of in-room characteristics, particularly if you decide to, you know, allow some of the existing ones to continue, or some percentage approach that we've suggested, and that's a later question. But they would have to retrofit the rooms presumably, and that, too, we'd look at through a building permit and inspection process in the first instance. And the question just becomes to me, is one inspection a year sufficient to really ensure a relatively complex regulatory environment is being met?
Well, I guess if we look at the Mobile Home Park Act at the state level and their regulatory framework, they have it set up so that each mobile home within a mobile home park requires a $25 fee paid by the mobile home park owner. And then in addition to that $25 per home fee, the landlord is then charged a registration fee or some other mechanism. And the language in the law says that these fees and associated costs have to come from this program. So as it relates to whether we're talking about compliance or violations of the law, or bringing them into compliance to begin with, I'd like to see it be a self-contained unit so that we're collecting the fees necessary to regulate it and not have any sort of spillover in other departments or resources.
That's good.
Because the other concern here that I have is, is that if we're focusing on extended stay and encouraging businesses to move into the extended stay arena, that's going to reduce our revenue from lodger's tax.
Ms. Davis?
I kind of want to piggyback on something Mr. Keeter said earlier. And I think a lot of this, I mean, I am all for making sure these characteristics are there, even if folks have to retrofit, and even if it has to be a phase-in, like we give you three years to do it, or, or whatever it might be. Because I think, again, we're talking about many of the vulnerable people in our community. And I don't know if a lot of you remember, but I think you do. It was only a couple years ago that we were given Joyce J. crockpots as a part of a mayor's event that was going to families in these hotels that have nothing to cook on. So I do think that although some of these folks might have to retrofit and those types of things, sorry for you. You know, I think if they're going to do extended stays, that they need to provide facilities for these folks because it's not fair to the vulnerable who have no other option. And so then the other thing is, is are folks doing things dangerously in their room because there aren't approved facilities and, and accommodations for that? So I think that's a thing we have to think about. I mean, even if we phase it in for these folks. But I, I do think all of these are essential. Again, you know, maybe on some of these, we could be a little bit flexible on the size. But I think as far as the facilities for an extended stay, I think that that's a no-brainer. And I just kind of go back to the crockpots that we had to send to folks.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Hoppe?
Slightly off-topic, but where Councilmember Urban was talking about the, our lodger's tax, that's something we can address after we have extended stay lodging, then we can address that?
We could change the code. Yeah, there's, it's, it's a, it's a code section that could be changed. It's a tax, yeah. We'd have to, we'd have to evaluate it against Tabor to see if it requires a vote of the people.
We would, but, you know, something that, that Ken mentioned, or actually, as Councilmember Urban mentioned, is licensing fees. And there's nothing wrong with having- And there's nothing wrong with having the licensed group of people pay for the costs of the regulatory program that ensures that their license is current and correct and they're satisfying the requirements. And so it would mean a licensing fee that would be more than, you know, some small amount because of the staff time required to enforce it. But you've got the right to do that, and that's a fee, not a tax. And it would be a matter of evaluating, okay, what's it really cost annually, personnel and other costs, to administer the extended stay lodging slash hotel licensing program? And then you build that into the fee, usually based upon the number of rooms or some other metric. But you have the right to do that so that you're able to fund the program you need, as opposed to not being able to fund the program you need.
Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you. With that in mind, number three, in-room characteristics. I would like to ask for consensus, and if council supports the general framework proposed above for establishing minimum in-room characteristics for extended stay lodging, remembering that it is going to go to, and then come back to us.
Looks like consensus on that question. Thank you. We'll move to number four, then, the common area characteristics.
So again, all this with the caveat that we need input from the industry. But this, these are some of the things that we just kind of threw out there as things that we thought, based on Doll's Office research, our general knowledge, and just kind of the typical business model for extended stay of things that we think make those a better, longer-term kind of housing option than just a typical transient hotel that doesn't have, might not have many amenities at all. So various types of common amenities that we indicated, 24-hour desk staffing, business center, fitness center, other kind of recreational facilities, common area laundry, so that that isn't something that they necessarily have to go out to an off-site laundry room because they presumably will be needing to do that. Possibly an onsite restaurant option, so that that is another option. And then as a kind of overall comment, we've said, you know, perhaps it's, that's a litany of lists, and you have to have four of those or something like that, so that you give the industry flexibility to say, well, that's not in our business model, but that clearly is. So that's kind of our general approach on the common area amenities.
Discussion on that. Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would agree, like, I think that the 24-hour front desk staffing or some sort of 24-hour access to staff in this kind of a facility should be required. And then maybe a list of, you have to accommodate three other of these amenities or four other of these amenities. But I'm just, I am especially concerned about this as far as the current businesses go and whether they would be able to retrofit to accommodate all of these. You know, I can understand the laundry facilities, maybe an in-house kitchen, not necessarily a restaurant. And then some sort of common area, meeting area, maybe. But when we start talking about requiring a swimming pool and a fitness center, I think that that's a little, that's a little heavy.
Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, I agree with some, with the retrofits. It is kind of hard to say, okay, now you have to go dig a swimming pool in your parking lot. However, I think for, you know, kind of our future, we definitely, you know, brand-new extended stays, we definitely want them to have all the good stuff, all the bells and whistles. But I do agree with the 24-hour front desk staffing being a requirement, and then, you know, another little list of amenities that they could pick from once there's input from the industry.
Additional discussion? Ms. Davis?
I think the only thing I would add, and it's, again, this is nitpicky, but where it has restaurant options, again, I know that sometimes those places don't necessarily have a restaurant option, but they have like a little store. So like, they might have Lean cuisines in a freezer that you could purchase, or Pringles or, you know, things like that. So they have kind of a, yeah, or mix. So maybe even that option, that at least somebody could go and pick up, you know, a banana in a Lean cuisine or something.
Or vending machines, maybe. Additional discussion? Ms. Hoppe?
So with that being said, unless anybody has something else, I'm just going to ask for consensus to support the general framework proposed above for establishing minimum common area characteristics for extended stay lodging with a minimum amount to be considered after input from the industry.
Show of hands. Thank you. Okay, that will conclude item number four. How's my counting going? Number five, existing hotels and motels.
Yeah, so we've started to talk about, I think, both of, all the next several questions in some form or fashion. So the first question is, you know, for these existing facilities. I mean, it really is a policy decision for you all to determine what, you know, what you think is going to be the minimum kind of standard if you want to exempt some of these existing rooms. From a legal standpoint, jump in here, Jerry, but you know, basically, our position has been, if we want it to be, that we never said you could operate as extended stay. No, we never defined transient in our code, but the common, you know, understanding of transient is that it's for periods of 14 days, and we're going to explicitly say that now. And so moving forward, and I'm not advocating for this position, but we could legally take a position where we say, if you don't have everything we listed there, common area amenities, in-room amenities, you're not an extended stay facility, and over some period of time, please cease operating in some, in that fashion. So that would be one position that we could take. But the questions really are, do you want to go for some different model? So question number one is, we know what's happening. If we get to a point where we're creating extended stay that creates some level of nonconformity, ballpark, how long do you think you'd want these existing hotel motels to have to come into compliance with whatever amount of the regulations they're going to need to come into compliance with?
So this was the part where I was really thinking, like, how, how do we help the families that are currently there that, although it's not a sustainable, long-term model, but how do we help them find, you know, get to a better, you know, get to, not, I mean, maybe it's not a better place, but get to a place that's, you know, appropriate if we're going to say that this is no longer appropriate for you here. And so, you know, my thought was that we give them, like, we tell the hotels that, you know, you have to notify all of your residents regardless if they're only here for two days, one day, or if they've been here for a long time, via a letter that has in it resources of people in places that they can call to find, you know, a different housing option. And that that has to happen for 60 days or, you know, whatever. I wrote down 60 days, but that has to happen for 60 days. Every person who checks in and every person who's currently there, and every time someone checks in, new. They get that information so that if I were coming there thinking I'm going to stay there for a couple of weeks, and I, and then I get the letter when I check in, I know immediately that this is not, this is not the place that I'm going to be at long-term, and so I can go and try to find something long-term. I know that we do have a couple of resources in our community that that is their job. That's what they work on. They also get, you know, grants and stuff like that, and it's part of their mission. And so, so my hope was that we could come up with some sort of, you know, this is how you will inform your current residents and every other person who's checking in for the 60 days after this goes into place, or 90 days or whatever, and that, and to make sure that those letters and information are going out to those folks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know that I would want the first letter introducing a guest to Wheat Ridge being a list of resources for individuals who may be experiencing homelessness. And that's not to make light of their situation, but it is to say, people may be coming to Wheat Ridge to vacation, you never know. Let's not, you know, forget that the Greenbelt is such an international attraction. But that is to say that I don't know that we want to put that foot forward that says, because you're staying here, you're likely going to be homeless or about to be. So I'd want to walk a fine line there and provide resources for those that are asking for it, but not necessarily make it a uniform process.
Ms. Davis?
So, you know, I'd be interested to hear, you know, what Ken might have to say. But, you know, I do feel like if we gave them an amount of time, and I'm not saying them as in the residents, I'm saying them as in the hotels, and maybe transition through, you know, I'd be curious what Ken would say about it and chief. But the other thing about it is, I wonder, again, I know we do business grants and matching grants. And so if we're serious about this, you know, I'd be curious of possibly what kind of grant could we focus in on that area? Say, for instance, a hotel decides to reconfigure half of their rooms to meet these needs and make them look nice and that. Is there some kind of grant? And even, you know, to go beyond that, is there also some kind of grant out there that even the city of Wheat Ridge could apply for that would support the process as well? So I'd like to look into those things to say, let us help you make yourselves better. And you put your money where your mouth is, and we'll work to support that.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to that point that Christie brought up regarding incentives or grants or otherwise, I would see that one of the largest issues we have with our hotels is the average daily rate that they receive based on their condition isn't as good as it could be. If that average daily rate were 10 or 20% higher, it would produce more amenable results. I don't want to be too specific about that, but I think that the higher the rental rate, the better off we'll be. And if we can show them some sort of program where if your rental rate is X, we'll allow some sort of investment in there. But if they're continuing to have a cut-rate room, that's going to attract individuals that can pay a cut rate, so.
Mr. Keeter?
So similar to kind of the last few items, I'm, I guess, I'm assuming that we're probably relatively in agreement that some sort of grace period would be required. But again, that's one that seems particularly crucial to public outreach, to say, not just how long would it take you to meet whatever standards we have, but to even do it at a part where you're at a point where you're not just shoving everybody out the door and then redoing the entire place at once, but with some sensitivity to the people that are, that are there now. So I guess that's all I have to say.
Ms. Hoppe?
I guess my concern with, the reason why I wanted to make sure that a letter was going to everybody is because I used to work in outreach with at-risk and homeless youth. And it didn't matter how many times you put things on the wall at the arcade or the wherever. We got more youth referring themselves when we gave them a card that had the information and the resources on it, and they, it was something they could have in their pocket rather than something being on a wall. So, you know, if there is, I guess for me, I would just like to make sure that there's some sort of, along with, I would like to provide a grace period for the existing hotels and motels to comply with the new extended stay lodging regulations. Along with that, I would like to see some sort of transition plan that includes resources and information for those who are utilizing the, you know, short-term hotels as their long-term housing option. And so I guess I'd ask for a consensus on that.
Okay, we have a consensus on that. Mr. Johnstone, do you foresee that a number of these properties might become sort of partially extended stay and then partially, you know, nightly stay?
Question number five B.
Okay.
So that's where we're at. So just to be clear on the, totally support the grace period. Obviously, we all understand that these are sensitive populations, and we need to be sensitive in response to that. That said, I think when you talk about, to answer the mayor's question, creating a framework whereby some of these existing hotels could, I've suggested, create a portion of their rooms to be extended stay. A portion because I think we could probably all acknowledge that there's no way they're going to be able to recreate the kind of amenities that we think are important, longer-term extended stay, both in-room and onsite. So there will be a period of time, in my mind, between that grace period and between when they can convert rooms. Because, I mean, if the grace period is, you know, 60 days, 120 days, even 180 days, there's no way that they're going to be able to get through the approval process, to get building permits, to find money, let's be honest, right? I mean, this is, it's going to take them potentially several years to really go to that new business model. So that's really the next question is, that said, do you want to leave that option open? That they've been operating in this business model for some period of time. We don't like the manner in which they've been doing it because of the reasons that we're outlining in our, in our new regulations for extended stay. But that said, it is your business model, and if you make X, Y, and Z upgrades to the inside the rooms, and X, Y, and Z, or maybe it's just X and Y, common area amenities, because I get that it's hard to find space for a pool, but you can convert an existing motel room to a laundry room or a meeting room, right? So it really, they wouldn't have to make some of those physical changes to the building. So that's the question. Would you, and then if you do that, can you have 25% of your rooms be occupied for more extended stays?
Ms. Hoppe?
So really, what we're asking for is, we're asked for a grace period for them to comply with the fact that they are not extended stay motels and that they need to then become traditional hotel motels. And they need to behave in that, in that manner with their guests. But then an additional compliance grace period for them to convert some of their existing non-compliant rooms into compliant extended stay rooms? So it's really two, two things?
Right.
Okay.
Additional discussion?
I would support that because I think that it does allow the transition so that if, hey, they're able to say, okay, we're going to do the first floor extended and, you know, and then wait, and it kind of goes back to Zach's point that, you know, maybe those ones could have some increase and they'll get more funds, you know, and they can do others or they can maintain the, you know, 50% are extended stay and 50% are the shorter-term stay. I would, I would support that for those existing.
So do we have consensus on that question? Did you need to have a definition on how long, or is that something that we can come back at a different, at a later time? And I think we can discuss the details about how that would be, how that would be implemented? Thank you. Okay.
That is all of our questions because you answered the last question earlier in the meeting.
Six exceptions.
Oh, exceptions, I'm sorry. So in the same vein of being sensitive to some of the populations that these hotels serve, both now and moving forward, there are certainly people in these rooms that are in, let's just say, a different set of circumstances. We've thrown out some examples, out of their house under an insurance claim. You know, this is all because there was a fire, and this is the only option their insurance company will pay for. They don't have coverage as part of their insurance for temporary housing, so this is all they can pay for. Some sort of extenuating circumstances like that. I think extenuating circumstances related to being on housing assistance, being on a voucher program from one of the providers of hotel vouchers. So I don't know what the full list of those exceptions is, but that would be an exception from the 30-day maximum occupancy requirement is what we're suggesting.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask that, I don't know if it's necessary to spell this out, but there should be an exception for hospitals or other healthcare, excuse me, other healthcare facilities, rehab facilities and other places where a person is staying for a extended period of time but because of some alternate reason other than just to stay there. So I don't know how we would frame that, but it would at least be healthcare-related. I don't know if there's any other rehab or other places where someone's staying for longer periods of time.
You don't, you don't mean like a rehab, though? Staying in the hotel for rehab?
No, like, a rehab facility has individuals staying there for more than 30 days.
Okay, okay. You had me worried for a minute, I'm like... You had me worried for a minute, I'm like...
Mr. Johnstone, this ordinance really wouldn't cover rehabilitation facilities, would it? I mean, we have different set of regulations.
Yeah, that's different land use and the zoning code.
Okay, Mr. Keter?
Yeah, I took, actually initially took Mr. Urban's comments more in a Ronald McDonald House sort of vein where families in town because somebody's injured or sick or whatever, that there would be an exception that way.
Okay, additional discussion? Mrs. Dozeman?
How would that be regulated? Like, would the hotel motels just police themselves in that kind of a manner? Or like, how into the weeds would you go with the exceptions? And like, how would you determine whether it's, you know, an exception?
Yeah. I mean, I think all this kind of gets self-regulated by the operators in the first instance, and then we're kind of yet to figure out through the licensing requirements what our role in that looks like. You know, we're suggesting that they'd have to keep a ledger, so presumably that ledger would show Jane and John Doe there for 90 days, and when we saw that, we would ask, what's up? And they would provide some sort of piece of paper documentation that would substantiate that they're meeting one of the exceptions. And it could be that if we're inclined to, you know, keep this language a little loose, knowing that we maybe can anticipate every exception that might be and give a little reasonable discretion to be able to grant those when they're deemed appropriate.
Ms. Davis?
My only, I think we should allow for exceptions, but again, I think that, like some of the other things, I think we should allow for a percentage of rooms to be exceptions because, again, coming from healthcare facility that does a lot for folks, sometimes rumor has it, and then you get everybody going to there with whatever exception you might have. So I think that instead of it turning into, you know, whatever exception we're allowing, that the place is full with it, just say, you know, 10% of the rooms can be used for exception purposes, just so that, again, you don't have the, you know, the place being used for all one kind of user.
Ms. Hobbie?
So then I'll take a stab at a consensus that we support allowing some exceptions to the maximum 30-day occupancy rule and that staff works to find a balance of a percentage of the rooms that are allowed for exceptions per property.
And it looks like we have consensus on that issue. Is that, is that complete?
Yeah, that's it. Again, thank you very much. We will work on kind of crafting this into a framework, not an ordinance, but maybe something that's a little more user-friendly to start reaching out to the public. I don't know, we'll kind of separately, I think, meet with the industry at large that might inform our longer-term model and convene some sort of a meeting with the existing operators. And we'll certainly coordinate that with police since they, you know, have those relationships, as do we, but their community services unit is the team that coordinates those annual hotel motel inspections. So there'll be some consistency with that team in terms of doing that outreach, and we'll support that effort.
Mr. Johnstone, would we also do any outreach to the affordable housing advocates? You know, I know that this is going to impact that sort of segment of the population.
I think so. And I'm not sure, that might be a little further down in the process as we get closer to actually having an ordinance that's going to have these impacts.
And I think as part of the strategy of figuring out how to relocate, if needed, displaced families and individuals, yeah, we definitely need to reach out to all those groups.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good presentation. Which leads us to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Lodging Facility Licensing Program. Who's going to introduce this?
Mr. Brennan.
Mr. Brennan.
Okay, Chief?
So let me turn my mic on there. So, you know, about a year and a half, 18 months ago, Patrick and I hosted a meeting with all the department directors to really talk about, you know, some of the issues the police department was seeing, in particular, along the I-70 corridor and the I-70 Kipling corridor. And really, it was, you know, the issues is referred tonight, you know, with Ken's discussion on, you know, extended stay go beyond just law enforcement response, right? And, you know, we're not necessarily going to, you know, we can come up with some regulatory control and stuff, but arresting people and displacing people is really not the answer. But we do need some good regulatory ordinances around this, and we certainly need options to help people, you know, who might be displaced. And there's an economic component to this as well. You know, when we look at that I-70 Kipling corridor as the entryway to the city and what do we as, you know, what do elected officials, what do community members want to see? So we took a pretty hard look at the nine hotel and motels that we have in the city. And you have, we've shared with you some of the crime statistics from that, the stuff that we thought that you might find of value. But a couple of key points out of that memo, you know, the nine hotels and motels that we have account for about 7.5% of the total calls for service that we have as police department, you know? So that equates to just under about 5,000 calls for service over a three-year period of time. A little over 6% of those resulted in case reports. That means that there was some sort of offense that occurred there. Could have been assault, disorderly conduct, could have been a detox, could have been stolen vehicle, sex assault. I mean, you know, it runs the gamut of all the different kinds of situations that a police department might encounter. And over that same five-year period of time, right under 15% of all our arrests were generated at hotels and motels. So, you know, as a police department, you know, those, while not unusual to see maybe an uptick in criminal activity in places that rent rooms by the night, those are pretty significant resource commitments from the police department perspective and certainly could be used elsewhere in the city to deal with some of the other issues that we see. So if you look at that data, there are really three hotels and motels, you know, I'll call the top three, that have the highest calls for service, they have the highest number of arrests and the highest number of calls for service there. And over the years, we've taken, you know, a variety of approaches to, you know, try to address some of the issues. Certainly from a crime and disorder quality-of-life perspective, we do annual hotel and motel inspections. We touch, not only our CSOs, but building inspectors, the fire marshal, touch all of these institutions at least once during the year. And in some of them, we have seen some pretty significant health safety issues which they have had to address. That's resulted, to give you an idea, everything from making sure screens are on windows to balconies that needed significant repair, to heating issues that we've, mechanical issues that we've seen with some of these. So the inspection program does work in terms of bringing hotels and motels up to a sort of a minimum standard of health safety perspective. We, on just about an annual basis, have tried a variety of directed enforcement approaches. So we have saturated that area with officers during certain days of the week, certain times of the day, we see increases in the number of arrests and in the numbers of citations that might be issued for traffic violations. But those approaches generally tend to displace crime, and as soon as we're out of that area, it sort of fills back and it's kind of like a water balloon, you know? We squeeze it on one end, we displace it, when that pressure's taken away, it sort of returns. The other challenge with, you know, that corridor is really is economic. All those, as you know, all those hotels and motels were built many, many years ago, and they've gone through different iterations of what they've looked like, you know? You know, one hotel was certainly a middle-tier hotel for a number of years, very, very well taken care of, very popular, and it's been sold, and now it's sort of become that budget kind of hotel. The other thing that we've done, just from a prevention effort, is, you know, tried to incorporate the Hotel Motel Crime-Free Housing Prevention Program with mixed results, but we are pursuing that again as a way to try to get the managers and property owners, you know, in to meet with us on a frequent basis so we can talk about, you know, strategies to try to address some of the issues that we see. I sometimes get asked, well, why do we have problems there? What are the conditions that cause that? What are the factors? And much like crime in a city, there are a variety of different factors that impact, you know, police response to any, you know, lodging facility, hotel or motel. Certainly, you know, the quality of the facility, the age of the facility, how it's kept, kept up, that property maintenance piece, the, you know, the fee to run a room for a night, all present, you know, challenges. Are they a cash business or credit card only? We have one hotel motel that was a pretty frequent flyer for us for a number of years. They went to a credit card-only way of doing business and significantly reduced the crime and disorder that occurred there because they were catering to a different clientele than, you know, the cash business catered to. You know, how that building is kept up, the kinds of improvements that they make in those facilities, you know, is important, too. So you had data that was provided to you on, you know, the property value to improvement ratio, and I mean, if you look at that, you can sort of pick out where those problem hotels and hotels. Those hotels that tend to invest money and do improvements over an extended period of time have less of an impact on law enforcement and other city services than those that, you know, that don't make that investment. So in the memorandum, we've provided you with, you know, about six solutions to how to address, you know, crime, you know, and disorder in hotels and motels. And we're really sort of already doing four of those that we've put in place. The remaining two deal with, you know, ordinances around extended stay and then ordinances around hotel motel licensing. The concept of hotel motel licensing isn't new to law enforcement, but it tends to be one of the last steps that are taken. So Chula Vista, California certainly is one of the first law enforcement agencies I'm aware of that has taken that particular approach. But that approach has grown throughout the United States, and so the staff report refers to other areas such as Indiana, Ohio, that have adopted that. And I can tell you, just from some of the, you know, the assessments that I do, you know, when I'm not here as a police chief for Colia, I've seen a number of cities in the Dallas, Fort Worth, and Houston area that have adopted similar ordinances to sort of address the issue with, you know, budget motels that tend to have a disproportionate number of calls for service. So as we were doing our research and talking about this, the city of Lakewood started the process of putting together an ordinance, and in your packet, you have gotten information on that particular ordinance and how they went about creating that. Jim's going to talk in a little bit more detail around that. But that whole process involved receiving inputs from the hotel and motel industry as well as the city and the police department describing why it was needed and what the issues were that they were facing. So if I can, I'd like to just hand this over to Jim so he could talk a little bit about Lakewood's ordinance and what we're proposing, looking at.
Thanks, Chief. So just as the chief said, it's not a new program. There are, if you look at the U.S. Department of Justice and the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, they put out a really good document, just about 100 pages of, it's called Disorder at Budget Motels. And these cities that the chief has talked about, Chula Vista, Indianapolis, and how Lakewood has developed, are all really straight out of this. This is what we have been looking at to address issues. And as the chief said, there's about six different things that are mentioned. We utilized four of them really strong, and those other two are the ones that we've been talking about tonight, is the extended stay and this licensing. So Lakewood's licensing, obviously, there's a lot of work that goes on to get groups together and to talk about things. I'm going to kind of cut to the chase of what's in their ordinance, beginning with definitions. What is the authority? Who is the authority that regulates the licensing? In Lakewood's case, it's the City Clerk's Office, which has, they review the licenses, they approve the licensing, they revoke licensing, they hold hearings if a person wants to have a hearing regarding their license. So all of that is included in there, as well as definitions, what is a call for service? Pretty simple to us because we think in those terms all the time, but it really needs to be spelled out as any police-initiated call for service, any calls for emergency services, reasons that police officers are on the property. And then what is done is a ratio based on the number of calls for service and the number of rooms in that particular hotel motel. So they come up with this figure, and that can be, you know, Lakewood has set a certain standard of 1.89 as the ratio between calls for service and available rooms. There are other, there are other cities that have done a different type of system, kind of like a three-tiered system of, it starts out low, say maybe a .25 ratio, and motels, hotels that hit that .25, they don't have to do anything. They're operating appropriately, their practices are good, there's really no discussion over that. Obviously, the police department and the city is interested in helping them if they have questions or if they want to do some crime prevention, but they're good to go. The next level is above that .25 ratio, up to a 1-0. And in that area, they need to lower those calls for service, and the police department will work with them. And generally, what they're going to do are those, make sure that they are doing those other four things that we've talked about before, police patrol, participating in the crime-free motel program, all of those kinds of things, doing best practices that the chief's already talked about. And then if they're over that 1.0 or whatever figure appears to work best in the situation, then they're a little more stringent, there's more requirements involved. There is at a level where that license could be revoked or suspended, and that hotel would have to have a hearing, they could request a hearing, I would say, and that would be through the City Clerk's Office or whatever authority you would want to do, do those kinds of hearings. And they'd have to work on the situation before they could get their license back. So that's basically how the program works. As I said, I like the three-tiered system because it gives people the opportunity to work on a problem rather than just hit a specific, how would I say, negative number, and then they lose their license. This gives an opportunity to see maybe numbers rising, to work on that, and to keep hotels in different tiers. If you look at our numbers, and as the chief said, we've got three motels that would really hit that top tier that really need to be addressed. We have maybe three other motels, they're in that very low tier, they probably don't need any help from us, they're operating just fine. And then, a medium kind of layer that could use some help, that could use some incentive to comply with the crime prevention techniques that are talked about by the Department of Justice. So, I think that's covered most that's in there.
Right. Thanks, Jim. So, just a couple of things that, you know, I jotted down that I just wanted to touch on again. So, part of the challenge of an ordinance is adopting, you know, a ratio. So, the understanding of the ratio is pretty easy. Number of calls for service, so that's all calls for service. So, that's not only, you know, the hotel calling or a tenant calling, but that's any police activity that is specifically tied to that hotel or motel. So, those total calls for service over, you know, an annual basis are divided by the number of rooms. So, I did some quick math before I came down here, and, you know, in our, the motel that generates the most calls for service, last year that would have been a ratio of 2.89 if I did my math right, but pretty significantly, you know, high in terms of that. So, part of setting the stage on this is looking at, you know, how we want to set that, you know, what's an acceptable ratio. And Jim's proposal on sort of that three-tier, you know, the low, the medium, and the high is one approach. Lakewood took the approach of looking at the, I think they have like 12 hotels and motels that their ordinance applies to, so they ranked them 1 to 12, and they looked for the statistical anomaly, which was with the fourth-best hotel, because then there was a pretty significant increase from number five on. So, that's how they sort of established their, the way that they set theirs up. So, a variety of different ways to carve this out. I would really be interested, you know, as a chief, in, you know, when we do the outreach, when we talk to the hotels and motels that were considering this and trying to get input from them, is getting their input as well as, you know, looking at what we've already seen in terms of established ratios being used by other jurisdictions. Licensing currently right now in the city is done through city administration, right? This is, Lakewood has a different model that they use than we do, so I certainly don't see that being, you know, the City Clerk's Office, but certainly city admin does, and the city treasurer do a number of administrative kinds of things around our business licenses. Lakewood's model proposes an administrative hearing officer versus the, you know, the city treasurer, and frankly, the administrative enforcement model that we use, and the hearing officer process works pretty well, so we'd kind of recommend that as well. And as I've touched on, and we talked about in the earlier conversation, you know, the outreach on this, the education both of the community and the affected business owners, I think, is really, really critical and is a key part of the success in this. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions and, you know, of myself or staff or the city attorney on this. We think, you know, as a staff, that this is a good step forward to deal with the budget hotels and some of the issues the police department is facing. We certainly know from citizens that they would like to see more attention paid to this and deal with some of the concerns that they see on a day-to-day basis as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Brennan, and Division Chief Lorenz. I'm going to start with Ms. Davis.
So, I just have a couple of questions. So, one of the questions I have is, okay, let's pretend, we say, "Okay, we're going to do this license," and we kind of all know where everybody falls, you know, you guys all know. And if you have this outreach with these folks and say, you know, "Here's the continuum of where everybody is, and you guys are a high user of police and West Metro services, this is where you are, here are some tools to improve your calls and yada, yada, yah. If we see the calls drop from, you know, in the next three months, then we'll reconsider, like, your tier level." You know, I guess, is that something that you would consider to do when you start assigning tiers? Is kind of say, "Here's the tools, it's starting now, we're going to give you three months, and hopefully we see a change?"
Right. I mean, you know, in a perfect world, what you would like to see is the change, right?
Right.
You'd like to see, you know, from a broader perspective, you'd like to see owners' reinvestment in properties, you know, in particular areas so, you know, they look better, they appeal to, you know, a different clientele. I mean, you only have to go to some of the websites, you know, the travel websites for some of these hotels and motels to see the comments.
Yeah.
So, you know, what I would like to, you know, see is when that visitor, you know, from Kansas is driving through and they see a hotel or motel in our city and they decide to stop for the night, that they feel safe, that they have, you know, a clean environment, quality environment, and there's a safety component to that. So, that's really what we're driving at. So, what a lot of cities have done is, and we could certainly look at this, is, you know, if they start to fall on a certain tier, or, you know, is that we can say, "You have to adopt these business practices," right? They may not want to move from being a cash business, but we, administrative hearing officer might say, "Well, if you want to continue to do business in the city, you need to go to credit card only because that's one proven methodology in terms of approving your business." There are a number of business practices that, you know, a hotel or motel can take to reduce. You may require a security guard, it might require the installation of CCTV, you know, cameras, you know, a reinvestment in the property. I think there are a number of different strategies we could use.
Yeah.
That's really the idea.
So, I guess my question, my other, I have two other questions. So, one of my questions is, so if we have tiers, does that mean your business license is more? So, like, for instance, if I'm tier three and tier one is the best, is my business license 750 versus 150 a year because of the services that the city has to put? I mean, it's like, to me, for the tiers, you know, not only sitting there saying, "Oh, please do this, and this would be a great idea," you almost want to, you know, make it financially beneficial if you move from one tier to the next. So, that's one of my comments and things I'd like to consider. And then, my final one, and I already forgot it, so never mind, but it was a good one.
We'll let you come back.
Yeah, check back. I'm sure I'll think of it.
We'll go to Mr. Keter and then Ms. Dozman.
Thank you. If I'm reading the bar graphs right, then at least one of the top three is a national chain. I'm assuming that it's the franchisee that gets the license, but does the national corporate office have any role, both currently and under the licensing, or is it just that, or is that just the relationship between the franchise and the person who has the...
So, it's a good question. I'm not sure I have the entire answer. I do know that, you know, with that particular franchisee we've met with in regards to some other issues, and so they have to meet certain requirements in terms of the product that they offer and the kinds of services, but the actual ownership of, you know, all of those franchises isn't involved in the day-to-day practices because it's independently owned?
I know from previous experience that a lot of motels, hotels are really fearful of losing their flag and that there are standards that they have to meet now. Don't know about this particular company and what those standards are. It does not seem that that has been an issue, so I don't...
Ms. Dozman and then Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you. So, I'm looking at the lodging facility definition that was given in the packet, and I have, I do have a couple of questions that I would like to have addressed. So, first of all, we're talking about the lodging room is less than 30 consecutive days, so we are no longer going to be, so the extended-day lodging facilities that we just got done talking about, are those not going to apply to these licenses? Or if it's a facility that has both short-term and long-term stay, like, how would that...
Right. So, that's something that we'll need to work on crafting out. We, so it's good to have that information, so we certainly want to make sure that the extended stay and the hotel licensing align with one another. This is, you know, an example of an ordinance, you know, in a community that's really close to us, and we haven't done the deep dive on that particular definition to make sure that extended stay and this are in compliance.
So, and I know that this is also an issue that's kind of been flying under the radar as our code is silent on the issue, but, and we don't have the information in the packet because I'm not sure that you have the mechanism for collecting the data, but we do have Airbnbs, VRBOs, and hostel-type lodging facilities that are currently operating in the city, and I don't know if they would fall under this, if they're going to be addressed by this, or if you've had calls for services and it's been an issue in those kinds of facilities. And, because I mean, by this definition, it would fall under this licensing, this lodging licensing program, at least the example that we have from Lakewood, but I just want everybody in the public to be aware that we do have those operating...
Lakewood's lodging facility does not apply to VRBOs, Airbnbs, that's not the intent of this. This is really to deal with the issue of crime and disorder in our hotels and motels, you know, the ones that everybody can see and they know what they are. I do know that, you know, and Patrick, you can speak to this, at some point, you know, we're in, not the police department, but community development, city manager will be addressing the issue of VRBOs. We get very few calls for service at those locations that have been identified as VRBOs or Airbnbs. There have been a couple of locations we've got calls for service, but they don't even rise to the level that we're dealing with with this.
And we do. As promised from our last study session several months ago on short-term rentals, we, our next step was to bring forward a survey asking council what type of, if allowed, what type of regulations there would be, so that should go out tomorrow. I got the final version in my email box right now. I think we just need to make a change or two, and that should go out tomorrow to you all.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you. One of the questions I had was under additional possible requirements and, well, before I go to my question, I'd just like to say, I do support the three-tiered system. I think that it's a good way to be proactive versus reactive. I do support, if you're higher in the tier system, you are utilizing more of our resources, therefore you should pay more, and maybe that's a motivating factor to get to a lower tier. I know that the Lakewood memo and ordinance is just an example, but I would like to see kind of what our staff thinks our licensing fees would have to be to be able to cover our staffing. And then, my question is, one of the additional possible requirements and conditions for lodging facilities was to require, required to hire at the hotel's expense an off-duty police officer overnight. So, I worked in a very busy bar restaurant as a general manager for 10 years, and every Friday and Saturday night, we hired two off-duty officers for the last, I would say, seven years that I worked there. Prior to that, we had a lot of issues. Once we started doing that, though, those issues just kind of faded out. Now, I do think it's a good suggestion. My concern is, if it's only one off-duty officer, what types of safety protocols would they have? And if everyone's required and they're all kind of lumped in, then they could, you know, kind of have their own little team, but what kind of, like, safety concerns come up with having just a off-duty officer at a facility rather than having two as a backup?
Sure. So, you know, officers operate the vast majority of time, you know, in a solo capacity. There are certainly certain calls for service that, you know, we would send two or more officers to. You know, a liquor bar establishment presents its own unique challenges where alcohol is served, and so it may not be unusual to see, you know, two officers there as opposed to one. What we would probably recommend to be very transparent is not necessarily that law enforcement officer be there. I mean, that's certainly, you know, we could require that. What a lot of, the research has shown, is having a security company that works effectively with the police department can be just as effective and less costly than, you know, paying, I think right now we're charging $52 an hour, you know, for a police officer to work in an extra-duty assignment. The other concern, just from a Wheatridge perspective, is we're providing a number of extra-duty assignments to large, you know, customers, almost on at least four or five days out of the week. So, it's really, it really eliminates some of the other extra-duty that might come up. I think a security guard company, you know, that has a good relationship with PD and can do the kinds of things that are necessary would be the first, would be a first good approach on that for one of these hotels or motels that just had a really high service-to-room ratio.
Ms. Davis.
Okay, now, I have another one for my question. So, going through kind of this hearing process and if they want to appeal, if there were some issues, how would that work? I guess, would, I mean, would they be shut down? And then, so it's like, empty the place? You know, you've had too many calls, empty the place? Or is it going to be one of those soft, "Well, come to a hearing," and you have, you know, so many days to remediate it? And, I mean, does that process hurt? Or is it just kind of dragged out and kind of works to the business owner's favor?
So, it's how you, I think it's how you put the meat on the bone in terms of that administrative hearing and what the options are for the administrative hearing officer. You know, if you've got a tiered approach, then obviously you would want to give that hearing officer, you know, a certain menu of options that they could use, you know, for that business that is a continued violator. Yeah, closing down might be an option, but I'd like to ask the city attorney, you know, his thought, but my thought is to put, you know, meat on that particular bone of, here are your options, hearing officer, in terms of...
I'd want it to hurt if they were frequent flyers.
Well, sure, absolutely, but of course, each circumstance is unique. They do have the right to a hearing, or should have the right to a hearing, administrative hearing, so that those unique circumstances that are true for them are really looked at so that whatever punishment, whatever effect on their license, you know, was appropriate to what you, the hearing officer had seen as a result of a hearing. A good analogy really is, there are two analogies. One is the administrative hearing process we have, administrative enforcement process we have for many code sections already, and that's been really effective, getting people in. In front of a hearing officer is a serious event in their lives, and they take, you know, note of that, and I think that's been good. The other analogy is liquor licensing. The city's very familiar with how that works. You have show cause hearings and sort of a tiered approach in terms of enforcement tools. The show cause hearing by itself, even if it doesn't result in a suspension, is a real wake-up call for a liquor licensee. A show cause hearing and a suspension of X number of days is a heavier penalty. A show cause hearing and a revocation is even heavier. So, I must say that there, you know, it's very easy to structure a system that gives the hearing officer a range of tools and a range of punishments that then get applied on a case-by-case basis as they should be because each case is a little different, and I think that's capable of easily being constructed, and then you see how it plays. And if you believe that the hearing officers are acting too quickly to suspend after a year or two of experience, then you suggest that... year or two of, of experience, then you, you suggest that you dial back or the reverse. But I think you've got really good tools available and ones that are pretty well-tested. Our administrative enforcement process, our liquor licensing process are tools that are very similar to what's being proposed here. And they've, they've had lots of years of testing.
Okay.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question may be for the City Attorney and that nexus between the liquor license and the, this new license, how does a suspension of their liquor license affect this particular license and vice versa? So if my liquor license is suspended, is this license going to be as well or how do they play off of each other?
No, what, they really don't. What I was, I was mentioning the liquor licensing process, which is a, basically a hearing officer process. We have a commission here, but nevertheless, it's an administrative process and that kind of gradu- graduated enforcement techniques all around your license to do something is really transferable to this arena. I, I wouldn't pro, I, I wasn't expecting, I think it's probably rare, that you have a, a lodging facility that also has, this kind of lodging facility that also has a liquor license. So I think they're unrelated. To the extent they do have a liquor license and there's violations there, the liquor code allows you to address it. Now, I was just using liquor as an example, not as a, not as a tie.
Right, right. No, no, I wasn't suggesting that.
Okay.
I was just, in, in the instance where a facility had both those, you know, how would that work? And then my other question is regarding the maintaining a drug-involved premise and whether or not these, when you have a facility that has X number of overdoses a year, doesn't, at what point does that property owner have to recognize that more than one person is overdosed on their property and now it's their problem as opposed to them just sort of ignoring these overdoses and, you know, drug-involved activities? You know, when's the onus on them to, to recognize that and then be charged with this drug-involved premise?
I'm unaware of that statute. So, you know, I have to look at it to give you the, the answer. We, it would certainly be possible in the, in any licensing scheme that, that set up triggers for having to come in for a hearing. Right now, we've been talking about the triggers of the, as the ratio triggers the hearing. You could, you could have other triggers to, to get into a hearing where your license was in some form apparel. You know, the suspension, revocation, we've already talked about. That could be another trigger. I'm unaware of that statute. So, but, but it, to the extent it applies, we can cer- we could write it as a trigger if that's, and I'd be curious what the Police Department thinks about whether they're seeing those kinds of issues and whether that's a, a reasonable additional trigger basis for enforcement.
So we certainly see drug arrests and I've seen drug overdoses at, at these facilities. Trying to, trying to make the nexus or the tie, you know, and to the drug activity and how that, how that particular lodging facility is, is managed can be a little bit difficult. But if you look at Lakewood's model, for instance, in, in their staff report, you know, they talk specifically about things that can result in a suspension or a revocation. And they have about eight, I think eight or nine different kinds of, you know, requirements there, you know, that can, you know, trigger that, that suspension or revocation. And we could certainly look at, at doing that. You know, right now, I mean, although we see drug activity and, and we've had some overdoses at hotels and motels, we've had them at a number of other places as well. And I think that speaks to, you know, the, the problem with, with opioid addiction and meth addiction, number one. And then number two, it speaks to budget motels, right? Where, where they aren't taking care of some of the infrastructure needs, they don't have systems in place to, to regulate who's staying there and stuff. I wouldn't call any of our places drug dens at this point, but, but certainly, you know, drugs are an issue that, that we run across frequently because it's more related to the type of person that is staying there, visiting there than it is to, to maybe particularly the hotel or motel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional, Ms. Hoppe.
At this time, I'd like to see if I can come up with the consensus for staff to pursue adopting a lodging facility licensing program. If we get consensus to proceed with the development of a licensing, licensing ordinance, the Police Department will begin the process of educating hotels and motels in Wheat Ridge about this pending change.
And we have unanimous consent, consensus on that. Thank you very much, Chief Brennan and Division Chief Lorenz for that report.
And I'll stop by the City Council meeting when you adopt it and watch and cheer from the sidelines.
You know, I, I hope you're leading, leading the charge. Thank you very much. We're going to miss your, miss your concise reports. Thank you very much. That concludes our business, business end of our, I don't want to say our business end. That concludes item number three. Let's go to item number four. Mr. Goff, staff reports.
Yeah, a couple of things. A quick update though on Rocky, Rocky Mountain Bottle Company. I'm not sure if you've all been contacted or not. I know council members, Matthews and Dozeman have for sure, it's in their district, but we've been receiving noise complaints in the area because of some recent changes they have made. As you know, we, we offered them a tax incentive shareback for some major improvements that they're, they're making at the facility. But some of the new stuff they installed is causing some new noises in the neighborhoods, so both in Orvada and Wheat Ridge. Unfortunately, our code doesn't, is not real clear and Mr. Dahl can speak to this on exactly how we address code issues, but state statute is and, and we can, Mr. Dahl will speak to that. I just want to give you a quick update that we, we are in open communications with them and the neighbors that are complaining. I know Mr. Matthews has been out quite a bit talking to neighborhood, neighbors too. And we just met with them Friday again, the owners, the managers, and they are actively trying to, to find mitigation solutions to, to change the noise. They are hiring a company to do a noise audit. The city is also looking at bringing a company on to also do a noise audit just in case we, this has to go to court to, to force them to make some changes. We need to figure out what the, the noise levels are and how, you know, what's, what's too high. State statute sets the noise level, I think like at 50 decibels. Mr. Matthews and, and others in the neighborhood have, have seen readings of closer to 74, 75. So, so with that, I don't know, Mr. Dahl, do you have anything to add to that right now on what you found?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of things. There is a state statute that's pretty objective. It's got numbers in it, decibel numbers, that you can actually measure at a location and, and know. And if you're going to be hauled into court on something like that, ideally you want to have objective standards rather than subjective ones. The city's code is more subjective, frankly, and shorter. The statute, the state statute interestingly says, look, this applies, cities and counties can enact their own regulations to the, but they can't be any less stringent. So the, the state statute is a floor, not a ceiling, it's a floor. And as I compare our ordinance versus the state statute, the state statute is much more detailed and capable in enforcement because it's got objective numbers in it. So at this point, I think the right thing is happening, which is let's get some measuring, measuring going on to see how the operation measures up as against the state statute. This, the city, as a home rule city, has the ability, if it wishes and feels there's not good state enforcement, to enact its own more stringent system. It could enact the state system and up, and change the number and make the numbers lower. I believe there's a daytime, nighttime, I've got the ordinance or the state statute on the chair there. There's a daytime, nighttime distinction, which is very common in noise ordinances. I've written them in other cities and you allow frankly more noise during the day and so the number can go up. But that's the statutory and city kind of structure. That being in place, I agree with Mr. Goff that what is next needed is some numbers for what's actually happening there and we can compare that to what the codes say.
And Deputy Chief Lorenz is here too, who oversees code enforcement. So if you have any questions for him, he, he's here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. We will go to elected officials' reports. And since my eyesight in the back of my head is not very good, I will go to our city clerk first and see if she has anything.
I really don't have anything tonight. Just folks who are interested in running for office should look on the website, the city clerk's page under elections and then the, where it says candidate information and docs, documents. That's a source of a calendar and the documents that need to be filled out and so on. If anybody has any questions, they can certainly call us.
Thank you. Counselors, anyone have something? I'll start with Mr. Keter.
Thank you. Tonight, we touched periodically on issues of affordable housing and it was about two and a half months ago that we had the presentation in. And I wanted to bring up the possibility of, of taking the next step, of figuring out. I've talked a bit with Mr. Goff as to possibly having somebody from the county and to see what sort of county resources might be available, but also that presentation discussed some possible incentives that could be used to promote the construction of affordable housing. And so I would like to, this is my first time acting, asking to put something on the study session agenda, so I would like to move forward with, see if we can move forward with having staff investigate what, what sort of possibilities may be available.
And I support that.
So let's, let's get that on the agenda and we'll see if we can get some resources rounded up and have a discussion on that. Thank you very much. Other counselors, Ms. Davis.
So I would like to invite everybody to order Palisade peaches through the Wheat Ridge Rotary Club. If you go online to WheatRidgeRotary.org, there's a place that you can order online peaches. And the nice thing this year is, is that you can order half cases and full cases. But I would encourage everybody to order a full case because you can always do things with it. You can give some to your neighbors, take some to work, share with your family. So I think order a full case. I will also offer to deliver them to you if you want. So I'm already delivering to the tech center for one case that, that took me up on it. So if you'd like to email me and tell me you ordered a case, I will deliver. But the good news about that as well is that the pickup is very easy this year because it's going to be at Pietrus. So it's going to be an easy pickup, but if you even want it easier, email me, say you ordered, and I will deliver it. So please go out there. They support a lot of things within our community. They give scholarships to some of the kids in our community. They also have some international projects. But again, some other projects they've done is they've done some care packages for senior citizens. They've also supported some families and children in the schools that have needed clothing and also coats within our schools in our community. So this is one of their big fundraisers. The other fundraiser is at the Carnation Festival and the Beer Garden. Proceeds go there too. So really, if you guys could support them with ordering some yummy Palisade peaches, I would really ask for you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spent a Saturday afternoon out at the Ward Station. I was curious to see, not a Saturday afternoon, it was a, I wanted a workday. It seemed like Saturday because it was so quiet out there. Ward Station, the train is running. People that I talked to get off the train were complimentary of it. They thought in general was, you know, a, a good service. Unfortunately, during the day, not a lot of people are getting off. I mean, obviously rush hours are the, are the big, big deals there for people using the train. Had one couple from London came all the way over here from London to ride our train. So kudos to them. And they, they wanted to go downtown and visit downtown Denver and they were staying with someone out there in Orvada, so they took the train down and then went up and down the mall and they were very complimentary of Denver and Wheat Ridge. I would remind all of my constituents out there that even though we're in a quiet zone situation now that once in a while, at the operator's discretion, you will hear sire, horns. And there are some places you can call if you've got the same operator that seems to be loving his horn too much. But it is based on operators, not incentive, but operator's choice, at his discretion and based on, it's a safety issue. If he thinks he sees something, then he'll get on the horn. We still do have the flaggers out there, so I'm not sure why we need horns, but if it gets to be a problem, let us know. But meanwhile, we have it, so let's ride it.
Thank you. Additional elected officials' reports. It looks like we're wrapping up. We will adjourn for the night. Oh, wait a minute.
I'm sorry, just one real quick thing I forgot to mention. I think you all know that this Friday is Chief Brennan's last day. You're all welcome to come to a retirement celebration at the rec center at 2:00 PM on Friday. I have appointed Division Chief Pickett to be interim chief until we have a, a permanent chief in place. We are starting a process to do external and internal search for our next chief and probably going to take three to six months potentially on, you know, on how those things go. So, but we're, we're getting started on that process, so.
Okay. With that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.